I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Item three is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Agenda passes four to zero. I'm going to skip item four, which is matters for mayor, and move on to items from matters from city council members. Does anybody have anything they would like to share this evening? Item six is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items that are on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes four to zero. Item seven is upon application by VM Acquisition LLC is to consider introducing an ordinance rezoning properties located at 1010 East Main Street from HB Highway Business, HI Heavy Industrial, and RG5 General Residential to MXB Mixed Business. Ms. Tom Hodge?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. This is an application to rezone 1010 East Main Street, otherwise known as Metal Crafters. So this property is located over on the eastern side of the city, on East Main Street. As we all know, the large building right there. Some of the surrounding uses, real quick, around this facility, you've got some single-family residential to the south. See if I can get my pointer working. Some single-family residential to the south, along with some townhouses here. You have Union Basset Church and North Elphine Avenue here. You have Patches Mobile Home Park and the Sunoco across the street, along with a mix of older commercial and residences. And of course, the Future Sunset Park across the railroad tracks there. So the property is currently zoned, has three different zonings. The first one is highway business zoning, which allows for all of our commercial uses, along with some light industrial ones. And those are businesses that usually rely on the close proximity to the major transportation routes. Are usually restricted to these areas along the arterials and highways. The second zoning for this property is HI, which is our heavy industrial. Certain commercial uses are permitted within this district, along with some light industrial, and then, of course, all of our heavy industrial uses. And these are sites meant for major transportation terminals and manufacturing facilities that have a greater impact on the surrounding areas than the lighter industrial uses. And then the third zoning district is the RG5, which is our general residential district. This allows some of our medium-density residential uses, such as single-family detached townhouses and multiplexes. So here's a quick map of the current zoning. You can see either side of the property is zoned, the HB, the center building, is zoned, the HI, the heavy industrial. And then some of the parcels on the southern side of the property are zoned, the RG5, the general residential. So the applicant is requesting a rezoning to MXB, which is our mixed-business district. This is a newer zoning district that allows for a range of commercial, industrial, and residential uses. And it was created to provide a greater flexibility in these areas with housing in close proximity to some of these older industrial and commercial structures. And it's meant to encourage business activity and redevelopment while ensuring that the neighboring residential property is also enjoyable as well. And it's used in these areas where there's sort of this existing mix of structures and uses that suggests an expectation of occupancy activities levels similar to a commercial or industrial area, such as this site. So just briefly, a little background about this particular property. It was home, of course, to Virginia Motor Crafters until about 2006. And it was then purchased by the applicants back in 2013, and they began their first phase of improvements. Basic City opened in its location in 2016, and then the applicants got underway with their Phase Two improvements in 2022. These improvements are not complete yet. The applicant is still working on them. But there are several new businesses located in this facility, such as the Hap Coffee Roasters, Commonwealth Crush, Foundry. The building does still have some vacant portions of it, and the applicant's current zoning doesn't actually permit all the uses that are there currently, really, or the potential future uses. And these future uses could include retail, food service, office production, and then some possible upper-story residential. Although that would only be permitted by a conditional use permit. And so this rezoning to the MXB gives these applicants the flexibility in what uses can be located here in the future. Here is a quick look at the site plan. You see the main building where the Phase Two improvements are happening is right here. You've got some parking on the side and in the rear. And of course, the Basic City is located back there with the parking lot that goes out onto Hunter Street, the street up there. This is our 2008 comprehensive land use map. And as you can see, the majority of the property is designated as commercial retail, with some medium-density residential as well. This rezoning does comply with the comprehensive plan because of that mix of the commercial uses and the residential uses. Now, as far as transportation access goes, the one thing about the MXB district is that it does permit for a 50% reduction in the amount of parking required. However, this particular site, because of the different types of uses there and sort of the limited parking capacity the site has, all the users have signed on to a shared parking agreement. And this parking agreement allows businesses to share parking spaces based on business type and their hours of operation. And in order to address some potential concerns of possibly reducing the amount of parking that they've already promised as part of the site plan review, the applicant has proffered a minimum of 294 parking spaces, which was approved as part of that site plan review process. So that amount of parking will stay in place once this property is rezoned, despite the reduced parking requirements. All necessary utility lines and connections are present at the property. Public Works noted during their review that the water and sewer capabilities aren't reserved until the systematic we see is determined, any facilities fees paid, and that happens once uses are going in. And they recommend an investigation of the available fire flow to ensure the city and fire code requirements can be met for any proposed uses. As far as buffers go, there isn't going to be, is currently or is already in place, a mix of existing vegetation, Class B and Class C buffers that are providing that southern boundary with the residential areas to provide a screen between the two uses. And then the other thing I'll note is that there are businesses operating in there under temporary certificates and occupations pending the completion of the remaining items from those Phase Two renovations. And some of those outstanding items include landscaping, some stormwater facilities, the paving and marking of the parking areas. The applicant is actively working on those and pushing those towards completion. They're just not quite there yet. And so in conclusion, East Main Corridor is a mix of these former industrial, commercial, and residential properties. The subject property is being redeveloped into a multi-tenant mixed-use space. And the MXB district was created with these areas of the city in mind. And therefore, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning with the proffer, that a minimum of the 294 parking spaces on-site will be provided. And the Planning Commission also recommended approval with the proffer on a six-year vote. That is all I have for you this evening on this. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, the 294 parking spaces, is that on both sides of the property? Basic City side as well as the far end, is that combined?
That is... That is, okay. Yes, that is the case. It's all the parking spaces in the rear and on the side.
So Basic City is on the shared agreement?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. No? No? Okay. Okay, then, thank you so much. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance rezoning stated properties at 1010 East Main Street from HB Highway Business, HI Heavy Industrial, and RG5 General Residential to MXB Mixed Business?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Do I have a second?
No, second.
And I thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? Okay. This ordinance will be subject to a public hearing at the November 27 regular business meeting and receive final consideration following the public hearing. Item eight is to consider introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 78, Taxation, Article 3, Exemptions for Elderly and Disabled. I'd like to call on our Commissioner of Revenue, Ms. Von Schilling.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So we are looking at this amendment based on a few things, a couple of oversights, and then a couple of things that we can do better to better serve the citizens of Waynesboro when it comes to our elderly and disabled in the community. So four bullet points that you were provided in your briefing. The first one is the fact that we had had an ordinance 2019-89 that actually increased our limits to 32,000 for income and 67.5 for the total assets, which was not listed in our current agenda here. So we went ahead and updated that just to make sure that everything was in the right lines as far as the values are concerned, to align with the matrix that we currently use. The second item is the Virginia Code Section 58.13211-1 allows the governing body to extend a partial exemption to those who own property. Currently, what we do is if the property is owned in a husband-wife or a single situation, we extend the option for the real estate tax relief for the elderly and disabled. So some of those who are protecting their assets, like a mother and a daughter, would be unable to apply for that due to the fact of that the way it was broken down in the code for our ordinance. We had specifically allowed it to be husband and wife or of a single dwelling. So with us updating this as allowed in the code, it would allow us to extend that to those who are trying to protect those assets in case they were to have to go into a nursing home or something like that. Then they wouldn't have to sell off those assets. They could keep those in the family. So the way that would work is currently, if they had been approved for 70% reduction based on their income and assets, at least if they owned 50% of the home, we would give them 50% of that discount to give them at least 35%, giving them something instead of just telling them they're disqualified due to the ownership of the home. So we thought that would be a benefit. We do have several who, unfortunately, at the time when one of the spouses passes away or something, I've kind of warned them not to add that child on there just because I wanted them to be eligible for the exemption. So this will give them that option without having to worry about strains and things like that, once it comes to maybe them having to go into a home. Because if they go into a home even temporarily, they are still eligible for this. So we wanted to have that out there for them. The third item is allowing for the process in there for nonrelatives. We've always done this through the conception of this program. However, it really wasn't listed in our ordinance that way. So the way it is for it is we allow all relatives or nonrelatives in the home, their assets and income, their income to be included so that we know the total assets and stuff of that entire household. So our application currently says relative on it, but the code allows us to count relatives and nonrelatives with the first $4,000 being excluded from that. So we just want that inclusive so that we can change that application so that everything is mirrored with the state of Virginia Code. And the last one is on there just because we did not have any sort of fraudulent stipulations on there. And as of last year, I happened upon my very first one where they applied for our locality as well as another locality and received both. We didn't have any stipulations on what would take place if they obtained this exemption by fraudulent activity. So we wanted to have something in there to fall back on in case that did happen again. Are there any questions? That's all of those items detailed?
Any questions?
Just one question about... So if someone, just going to walk me through the ownership issue, if someone were to go, their spouse passes, they go into assisted living facility. Rather than conveying ownership to a child, they would retain full ownership or partial ownership and still be able to receive the benefit even if they were in an assisted living facility?
As long as there was potential for them to come back home. If it was going to be, you know, to the extent of there was no reason, what they thought that they could come back into the home, then they would lose that exemption. But if there was any possibility whatsoever of them coming back into that home, and they've maintained their ownership throughout that, then they would remain eligible, yes.
Okay. And then if... How would an irrevocable trust operate? So as an example, prior to going to a home, the property, the asset is placed in the irrevocable trust. Where they're the primary, they're still alive, right? So that would, that could, would they still be eligible? And just, I guess the question is, in that instance, would they still need to demonstrate that they have the ability to come home?
So with a trust, that changes things because a trust is considered a business in all aspects, tax ID numbers, et cetera. So in most instances, the eligibility would be lost because it is now in a business entity instead of a individual or a...
Okay, cool. All right, great.
They're no longer the owner once it goes into an irrevocable trust or any kind of trust. They are not the owner.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, any other question? Okay. Thank you so much. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. And any discussion? This ordinance will receive final consideration at the November 27 meeting. Item nine is to consider approving an economic development incentive package. I'd like to call on our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Greg Hitchens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Madam Mayor, if you would indulge me for one moment before providing the update for a message of appreciation. It's often said that economic development is a team sport, a sentiment that I subscribe to. And if you agree, may I submit that Waynesboro has a championship team. We've been working on Project Norse for quite some time, and along the way have needed input and information from various city departments as well as outside agencies. The cooperation and enthusiasm has been exceptional, and we would not be in the position we are in tonight without it. We'd be here all night if I listed names and departments. So may I just say that everyone who had a role to play executed it flawlessly. This level of cooperation is not always demonstrated in every community. But in Waynesboro, our collaboration was clearly obvious to the company and to the client. The result of our teamwork is why, one of the reasons we're here tonight. So to my colleagues and everyone who was involved, say thank you, and I'm looking forward to the next project. So thank you. So the update tonight. To remind you, Project Norse is a Fortune 500 manufacturing firm. They are looking at 60 acres on Shenora Village Drive behind the town center. $146 million of capital improvements, capital investment. And after a ramp-up period of three years, will have over 300 employees with an average salary of $94,000. Purchasing the site in 2023 and an expected opening in mid-2025. And within the first five years, $112 million of equipment, machinery and tools, and business personal property. I'm pleased to say that tomorrow, the governor will be announcing that the company has selected Waynesboro for this project. Pending that announcement, the company name is confidential, so we will be referring to it tonight as its codename, Project Norse. So as you might imagine, there are incentives involved with a project of this size. There are both Commonwealth incentives and local incentives. On the Commonwealth side, there's Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, as well as training and employment assistance, and a local incentive of reimbursements and taxes paid. You are provided three documents in your packet, the agreement for the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, the local performance agreement, and a resolution. I'll briefly go over those, hitting the high points, but please feel free to ask any questions. Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, also known as the COF, or any of us have been here for a while, the Governor's Opportunity Fund at one time. The city and the EDA are passed through for funds. This is a multi-year agreement between the Commonwealth and the company with various milestones along the way. Essentially, it's a dollar amount per new job for five years totaling almost $6 million. And a dollar amount per capital investment for three years totaling just under $3 million. For a total of $8.5 million if they meet all of their objectives. And also, participation and completely paid for by the Commonwealth, a cutting-edge, award-winning training program. And included in that are employment opportunities, employment assistant opportunities for those looking for work. They'll be able to go to a special website, see what kind of opportunities are available, and get some training that way. Local incentive is a performance agreement. Again, they must meet employment goals. It is a 10-year agreement to match the COF of $8.5 million. It is a reimbursement of taxes paid, so the company will pay 100% of any taxes due. They can request reimbursement per a schedule that I'll go over in one moment. And then the city will reimburse the EDA, which will reimburse the company. Again, 10 years begins January of 2026. $8.3 million of reimbursement of taxes paid and $200,000 if they meet employment and wage goals within the first five years. Real estate tax is an incremental tax over the current tax the city receives. And of course, machinery and tools and/or business personal property. The reimbursement schedule is to the right, so year one, they would receive 100% of the incremental value of real estate tax and 100% of any machinery and tools tax paid. And the schedule goes on for the next nine years, decreases over time for the next nine years. Tonight's action is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the local performance agreement as well as the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund. Once the project is announced, we will update the information you have in your packets with the company name. The city manager will then, provided you approve, the city manager will sign those. The EDA meets on Thursday to go over the same two documents. And then the material will be forwarded on to the Commonwealth and to the company. May I answer any questions?
Are there any questions? Thank you, Greg. And thank you so much for all your hard work and for all those involved in making this happen. Okay. With that, is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the performance agreement and Commonwealth Opportunity Fund agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. And is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that resolution passes four to zero. Moving on to item 10, that's to consider adopting a resolution supporting the city's application for funding various projects under the Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program. I'd like to call on our city planner, Allison.
Good evening once again. So tonight, I'm going to give sort of a high-level overview of the applications that were submitted as part of the 2023 Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program application. Ms. Tate gave a more thorough presentation at the October 23 meeting, so tonight I'll just go over each of the applications that we ended up submitting. We did end up submitting four applications this year. Two were for pedestrian improvements, one for unsignalized intersections, one for curve delineation. And we did go ahead and take advantage of the technical assistance that VDOT offered communities to assist us in preparing the application. We worked with VHB to help put together the application and estimate costs for that. So the first application was for about 25 intersections for pedestrian improvements. These sites are scattered across the city, and they will include a mix of improvements such as curb ramps, rapid flashing beacons, signage, and high-visibility crosswalks. The next application was the unsignalized intersection improvements. There were nine intersections in this application. And these may include such things as advanced warning signs, pavement marking upgrades. These were left a little more open-ended so that the exact improvements could be determined during preliminary engineering phase should the funds be awarded. And then the final application was for that curve delineation. And this is for that sharp curve over on East Main and Hunter Street, right by Basic City. And the improvements we applied for for this application were additional curb warning signs with speed suggestions and also pavement markings. And so with that, all of the four of these applications were submitted by the deadline of October 31st. And tonight, I'm asking you to consider adopting the resolution to support for these applications that we can put with, upload to that for VDOT. I'm also happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Yeah, okay. With that, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. And is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that resolution also passes four to zero. Then moves us to item 11, which is communication correspondence and calendar, and... I'll get that from you, Mr. Hand.
I'm working on this one tonight.
And I'll get some light. Are you going to still use the screen? Oh, no, that's okay. You can cut it off next time. You get it next time. I want lights during the presentation.
So there should be a different one. So the council will likely recall that for the last several months, we've been doing some review of our noise ordinance, especially with respect to some of the entertainment venues that have emerged in our local economy with live bands and DJs, et cetera, outdoor performances. And so while we think the noise ordinance works pretty effectively with dealing with concerns within a residential area and among residences, we think there is an opportunity to improve the ordinance with respect to regulating noise from these entertainment establishments. So I'm going to walk through a couple of decision points or consideration points that we'd like to receive some feedback and some indication from council regarding your preferences as we finalize proposed amendments to the ordinance. So the first question that we have and need some, or seeking clarity on, is what is an appropriate time for cutoff? And that is, so should noise be regulated or limited for these entertainment venues beginning at 10:00 PM? Well, let me state that differently. We would regulate the noise when the sound up to a point. And then what we're looking for is a time at which amplified sound would not be detectable from the establishment. So whether we think currently 10:00 PM is the time that's in the ordinance, there's some thought in our conversation among staff and with council and with business establishments that perhaps where those establishments are concerned, maybe that could be a little bit later. So if you could consider that, again, currently we're at 10:00. We might go to 11:00. I think you would see in some cities, probably cities larger than Waynesboro and probably college-town-type cities, anything later than midnight. As a city manager, I would think midnight is probably pushing the limits in terms of what I would recommend. And maybe even landing somewhere, at least on the interim period in the 11:00 to 11:30 range, might be appropriate. in the 11:00 to 11:30 range might be appropriate. Let me make sure where I want to be. So also, you'll recall your participation in an exercise at a local establishment where we were able to replicate what a live performance or DJ might, that experience might be. And so our question that we're posing to council seeking guidance is, what is our decibel level at the property boundary that you think it would be an appropriate limit? I think my recollection, Mike, what was, what was our experience in the field exercise at the property line? Was that 80 or was it less than 80? Little less than 80. So again, that's probably for Waynesboro, I wouldn't recommend going beyond that. But again, I'd want to emphasize, as with budgets and tax rates and all matters, ultimately, the decision is yours, and we, my job is to furnish a recommendation. Ultimately, you can decide what's appropriate for the community in your judgment. So we need some feedback on decibel level. Mike, help me with this one a little bit. This is inside entertainment venues. Noise will not extend beyond the interior of the building or entertainment venue from the cutoff time until the blank at next day. So this is when amplified sound can resume in the next business day? So on the previous slide, we asked you to consider a deadline for when noise would stop. So we might choose 11 o'clock. So quiet time or limited time from 11:00 PM until the next day at what time? 1:00 PM or 2:00 PM, 3:00 PM? When, when can that venue resume having amplified sound and live performance? Outdoor entertainment, noise is prohibited from the cutoff time until blank the next day.
The first one was for interior noise. Let's say like a business like Bard has out of the Foundry. 11 o'clock, the decibel level should be, or whatever time you all decide, cutoff at that time. However, if they continue to have a band play until 12 or 1 o'clock, that noise should not be emanating from anywhere outside of the building. Stanton uses a similar process over there, and it's worked really well for people, for businesses that want to extend a little bit past the 11 o'clock cutoff that they had. So basically, your decibel level should drop at 11 o'clock. You can still have entertainment inside, but noise cannot travel outside of the location of the business.
And then finally, there was some thought about, again, for entertainment venues, whether we want to allow exceptions. So let's say, for example, we contemplate an ordinance that limits noise at 11. There are occasions throughout the year where there might be reasonable justification for an exemption or an exception to that, and that might be New Year's Eve, July 4th. Those are the obvious ones that come to mind immediately. I think your staff probably thinks about a relatively, probably on the lower end of those exemptions, three to five. In our conversations with businesses, they would like to have as many exemptions as they could get. So I think we're still, again, perhaps having, trying to strike a balance there. So over the, the plan is to bring a revised, proposed revised ordinance to the council on November 27th. If you can consider your preferences with respect to these items, and if you have strong preferences, share those individually. If we don't receive any feedback, you'll probably receive an ordinance that reflects the comments that I've made here tonight, probably moderate on both ends, not pushing the limits in terms of time, decibel, or exemption. So if that is pleasing, if you feel like that aligns with the preferences of the community, that'd be great. Again, we're trying to strike a balance with residential neighbors and businesses and recognize that Waynesboro has a thriving sort of entertainment and restaurant business. It's become a greater part of our local economy, and we want those folks to be as successful as they can. Two, without disturbing the quiet enjoyment of neighbors. So that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to acknowledge Mr. Wilhelm's effort in researching options and facilitating the field exercise that we undertook, appreciate that.
Thank you so much. All right.
Do you have a quick question if you mind, Mr. Wong? When, I wasn't able to join the midday rock show, but what was the, what was the exterior, the interior decibel range that, that, you know, when it was, Gary had it cranked up? What was that, what was that volume at?
Anywhere between 80 and 90 decibels inside, it was intolerable.
Inside, but outs, but outside, audible from the outside?
Outside of the closest residence there, it was anywhere between 65 and 75, depending on the type of music.
Okay.
And if I recall properly, we, you took the meter across the fence and it dropped 10 more decibels.
So it was down like 50, 55.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have one question. One of the slides talked about weekdays versus weekends. So are we to consider a cutoff for weekdays and a cutoff for weekends?
Yes, we'd like, and I apologize, I didn't cover that aspect in the presentation. So there was some conversation that I learned that, I tend to think about this, the busiest times being for these types of venues being Thursday, Friday, Saturday. There was some mention that with live music, live music venues, there's, there are opportunities to catch bands as they travel from destination to destination. So they're probably playing larger venues on those Thursday, Friday, Saturday dates, but as they travel from venue to venue, there's an opportunity to bring that type of talent to our community on an off night, so to speak. And so if, if the Foundry, for example, could contract with one of these bands to perform in Waynesboro on a Tuesday or a Wednesday night, we would have to have, or the owner of the Foundry asked us to consider, would we extend or contemplate in the ordinance, live music that was being performed on a weeknight, Tuesday, Wednesday? And so that's something to think about.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So you just wanted to give you, our individual feedback to you directly?
Through email or tonight, if you'd like, that'd be fine, if you want to take a second, let.
I mean, yeah, for, for me, you know, Sunday to Saturday is, is, is fine. I was looking up my, the handy-dandy decibel range meter here, and you know, an 80 decibel has the comparable auditory level of a garbage disposal or city traffic noise is an 80 decibel. So having not, you know, been at the rock show in the middle of the day over there to, to test it out, that kind of does give me a little bit of appreciation and gauge, and I'm glad to hear that the further away you got, there was a, you know, substantial drop-off, and I know there's.
There was one time when we were standing by the fence of the adjoining property, and they had the music on, the door was closed, a truck went by and drowned out the music.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I'm inclined to support the 80 decibels seven days a week, and as, I, I think the frustration for folks that I've heard from has been the absence of something, right? And so having structure then, and setting expectations for not only our residents but for our business community, I think is just, it's just reasonable. So setting out those, those sort of standards seems appropriate, and, and then so, days of the week, decibel range, hours. So, you know, I'm inclined to think of places that I, that we go to at the short household, you know, we'll head over to the Jefferson or whatever, in Seaville, and the show's never going to midnight. And so I, I would, I would say at the latest would be 11:30. The latest for me would be 11:30, and I could certainly, whatever my colleagues want to, what their thoughts are. And then as far as a restart time, I mean, I think 1:00 PM seems reasonable, but playing into those exceptions, right? Because in special events, you might have a show the, the night before, and then you've got a holiday that you want to kind of get going at 11 o'clock for the lunch crowd. I get that, so I think that could fall into the exception. But I think as a, as a practical sense of not being, wanting to be mindful of our, of the, of the residential nature surrounding it, to give folks a little bit of a reprieve if, you know, should things resume. But again, 80 decibels is, it's a garbage disposal. So, and I don't want to be, you know, to diminish, find, folks that find that objectionable, but at the same time, I think that having a start time of 1:00 PM gives enough of a space from 11:30 to 1:00, but in the exception of, you know, case by case at 11:00. I'm inclined to lean somewhere in the middle. I know you had two, 5:00, and 12:00 opportunities. I think I'm kind of lying in, in the sweet spot of 7:00, because there could be a whole host of range of things. And the last thing that we want to do is, I, I would rather, I would rather us come down on that number than have to make an argument of why we have to go up. And, and so I think if, if you find in a year or two years down the road that, and we're just issuing these exemptions left and right, that I think, you know, some, some councils should have, should have that conversation about, well, maybe we're issuing too many of these things.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll get with you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, item 12, a citizen comment period. Do you have anyone signed up to speak?
I do. Travis Clements.
I didn't realize that I had to have a PowerPoint presentation, so forgive me, I didn't make that up, but.
I'd put the lights on for you.
My comment is, I have a problem. I have a house over on High Street, and it's a rental for me, and the city has a ordinance that you have to have registration of your cars. Well, three years ago during COVID, the lady who rents it from me, she couldn't afford to get her car fixed in her son's car, anyway, they had a couple cars there. And the city sent me a notice saying there's unregistered cars on your property. And I wrote back to the city and said, they're not mine. I told the lady, she's got to get rid of the cars. Well, eventually, I started getting the bill from the city for these unregistered cars. The problem is, they're not my cars, they weren't my cars. I don't have any police authority for dragging her cars away, because if I did that, she'd charge me with grand theft auto. And I had a renter that I, that left, left the house full of trash, and I thought was gone, so I started to clean it out, and he sued me for $25,000 for taking his personal property. So the ordinances may say you can't have a registered car, or have to have registration of your car. I understand that, but her cars weren't running, that she said she couldn't afford to get them fixed. She eventually did get rid of them, but I'd already gotten a bill for it. The bill should not have gone to me when they're her cars. She's the one violating the no registration. I understand you're saying on your property, and I am the owner of the property, but they're not my cars. So you understand where I'm caught in between on this. If I had police authority to go drag her car away, but if I, she went to you and said, you know, this guy took my cars, you charged me with grand theft auto, and that hangs around your record for the rest of your life. So anyway, something needs to be done about this so that the person who actually has the cars in their name that aren't registered, they get the bill, not me, because they're not mine, I can't enforce it. So that's what I need something worked on.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
That's all.
Okay. Oops. Let's see here. I lost my place. Okay, item 13 is to hold a closed session to discuss acquisition of real property to be used for municipal offices as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A3. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that this meeting be recessed and that the City Council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene in a closed meeting per Code of Virginia 2.2-37113 to discuss or consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body, specifically acquisition of real property for city offices.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Short, any discussion? This requires a roll call vote, Mr. Boardman?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
I, Mayor Wood?
Aye.
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 We're in closed session.
Aye.
We're in closed session. Motion for counsel to return to open session and certify.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the City Council of Waynesboro has convened in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this City Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Waynesboro hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Waynesboro.
Okay, thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Portman?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Congressman Short?
Aye.
Congressman Lee?
Aye.
We are back in session, and that brings us to item 14. And who's going to do this for Bruce? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
All right.